Okay, we're ready to call this meeting to order, but before we do, I want to inform the public that two of the councilors you see are not here. They are on a livestream with us, they will be voting livestream. We're doing the social distance stuff to avoid this COVID-19. So before we start the meetings, is there someone that would like to offer prayer for it?
Heavenly Father, we come before you this evening. We thank you Father God for today. Thank you for this new start for us in the city. We pray Father God that you give us wisdom, that you give the city wisdom, how to implement and how to spend the city money and the people's money, Father God, so that we may do good for our community. We also pray Father God that you bless our community, that you open the eyes of the citizens, Father God, that they may practice good safe procedures and not only the people, but the businesses, Father God. And we thank you, Father God, for this evening, and we thank you for a good start. Amen.
We're going to call this meeting order 6:02 PM roll call.
Mayor Hicks.
Present.
Counselor Rodarte.
Present.
Counselor Garcia.
Present.
Counselor Lucero.
Present.
Counselor Padilla.
Present.
Cool, everybody's here. Will you please stand and join in our pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ora!
Amen.
Approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please? Fred Padilla makes a motion, can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Regarde with a second. Citizens to address the council, obviously there's no one here and we didn't receive any questions online. We can go on to the hearing items. The first one is public comment discretion of our charter. I am very, very happy to say that we are in compliance with our charter after many years of not being in compliance. Approval of the regular city council meeting minutes. That would be Rick and Fred and myself, since you two weren't even on the board last week. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the regular city council meeting minutes.
Can I second?
Okay, Rick made the motion, Fred you second?
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, Fred you second? All in favor say aye, since there's only three of us aye.
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 Aye, aye.
There we go, okay. The next one is the mayor pro temp appointment. I spoke to Rick Lucero about this and I would like to have the council's approval to appoint Rick Lucero as the mayor pro temp. Can I get a motion?
I make a motion that Rick Lucero becomes mayor pro temp?
Second.
I'll second it.
Counselor Lucero.
Yes.
Counselor Padilla.
Yes.
Counselor Rodarte.
Yes.
Counselor Garcia.
Yes.
Okay, the next one is the board appointments. We'll just go through these real quick. Okay, the first one is the council of governments. I'm going to appoint Eric to the council of governments. I will take a seat on the council of governments and Laura will be the alternate. Is everybody good with that? Let me get a motion on it.
Yes, I make a motion that, well, I can make a motion.
Yes, you can, yes you can.
I make a motion that myself will join Mr. Mayor Hicks in the council of governments.
Second.
I'll second it.
Counselor Padilla.
Yes.
Counselor Lucero.
Yes.
Counselor Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Rodarte.
Yes.
The next one is economic development board. Fred Padilla and Laura Jaramillo and myself. Anybody got a problem with those? I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we accept the mayor's recommendations for Fred Padilla and the mayor and Laura.
Laura is the alternate.
For the economic development board?
Second.
I'll second it.
Counselor Lucero.
Yes.
Counselor Padilla.
Yes.
Counselor Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Rodarte.
Yes.
The next one is the transit board. Requires one. Fred Rodarte, Counselor Rodarte will take that one with Laura as the alternate. Could I get a motion?
I make a motion that Counselor Fred Rodarte joins the transit board for the 2020.
Second.
I second.
Counselor Padilla.
Yes.
Counselor Lucero.
Yes.
Counselor Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Rodarte.
Yes.
The next one is the future foundations family board. That one will be Rick Lucero, Counselor Lucero and Laura as the alternate. Could I get a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the mayor's recommendation of Rick Lucero and Laura as the alternate for the future foundations board.
Second.
I second.
Counselor Padilla.
Yes.
Counselor Lucero.
Yes.
Counselor Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Rodarte.
Yes.
And the last one is the solid waste authority board. I've been sitting on this board for 14 years. I think I will continue to sit on this board, okay? Laura will be my alternate and Eric, I want you to come to a couple of these meetings.
I'd like to as well, if you don't mind.
Okay, that's fine, we'll alternate them. That way we don't have a quorum at the meeting.
Okay.
Okay, and that way you guys can both see what we're doing as far as recycling goes and what's going on, because I mean, we never know what's going to happen with that recycling one day or the next. The market dies and dies, okay? So I'll entertain a motion for the solid waste authority board?
I make a motion that we accept the mayor's recommendation of Morihix, right?
Yes.
And Laura Council as the alternate?
Yes.
To the solid waste authority board?
Second.
I'll second.
I second.
Counselor Lucero.
Yes.
Counselor Padilla.
Yes.
Counselor Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Rodarte.
Yes.
Cool, thank you guys very much. The next one, declaration of city grants for an emergency area as a result of the COVID-19. This one here, guys, we're doing it at the recommendation of the county and the state because they say that it will be easier for us to get money from the federal government if there is going to be any money that comes down the pipe later on. So that's what this is about.
So that means we'll have something in place?
Yes, exactly. The resolution puts us in for any money that they're going to do. But the main reason we're doing is because they said it would be faster if we get it ourselves instead of going under the umbrella of the county and the state. Any questions?
So, you're saying the umbrella is better... This is what the state is proposing?
Yeah, the state and the county told us to put this in ourselves because it will help in the case there is any money. Okay, it won't take so long to get it. And who knows if there's going to be any, okay? We don't know that yet. We'll have to wait.
But it will benefit.
Yes, okay. Any questions out there, guys? In that case, I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution number 20-1671 for emergency area as a result of the COVID-19. Going once.
I'll make a motion that we accept resolution 20-1671 for the declaration of the city of grants to be an emergency area as a result of COVID-19.
Second.
I'll second.
Counselor Padilla.
Yes.
Counselor Lucero.
Yes.
Counselor Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Rodarte.
Yes.
Great. Application for appointment to the senior center. I'm recommending Timothy Hare to go ahead and join our senior citizen advisory council. And I'll entertain a motion to approve him as such.
Has he been real active in that?
He has since he came back to town. Say that, who was that?
Okay.
That's done.
Alright, I just wanted to give a brief comment prior to uh Mario and Donny coming on. I'm uh recommending an approval for all four items and I just want to give reason as to why for each one. Number eight Roosevelt Avenue Bridge. The impact to the city is very minimal because due to the uh contribution from the flood district of fifty thousand. So the impact to the city would only be a little over a thousand.
Okay, here's 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 my concern with this Donald. We did an engineering re- deal Fred was on the council back then. For the other end of Walter Street up there where it was supposed to start at. We did all the engineering work. The engine works done. There ain't no road been done and it's been twelve years.
Twelve years?
But we always paid for the engineering report. So my point being is. We go ahead and we pay for this and the governor doesn't give us the money because she already vetoed everything this year, right? So next year she's gonna be in a worse locker than she is this year. I mean, I don't know, that's that's just my feelings guys.
That's my question exactly.
It's gonna be a thousand dollars out of our pocket, so it's not really a killer. And we all know that eventually Roosevelt's gonna get done because that bridge has to be done. I just, I'm 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 speaking from experience with what happened over here at the last time. That we went ahead and paid for engineering in advance and then the project never happens.
Well, if you remember the bridge on Nimitz that we did. Well, not only do we uh have the engineering money, but we also had the money to build the bridge. And so, you know, it all it all went hand in hand. When we broke ground, this one, we don't have the money to build it, right?
We got no money for nothing. But it's only gonna cost us a thousand and the engineering report will be done. In another two, three years.
And how how long is that good for?
That's a question Donald, how long is the engineering report good for?
That's uh Mario, can you answer that? How are you thinking five years? But I'm sure Mario can answer that.
Well, uh mayor, mayor and council are bringing up a lot of good questions, Don. I I would I would suggest go ahead and finish with your comments and we'll dive into the presentation because many of those. Comments can be answered with the presentation.
No, 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 wait, hang on, hang on, that was a very simple question. Answer that question. Hang on, we're not, answer that question.
The uh the fifty thousand, uh the report is good for five years. Also, council should be aware that we got a motion for District Six that we aren't getting partial funding this year. So we're we're utilizing S E to secure the topographic survey, the geotechnical. The uh what we call the bridge selection report. The DOT requires that.
Partial funding is what Mario?
Which bridge structure we're gonna do.
Partial funding is what Mario?
Finish the analysis. In the next piece.
Mario, Mario, stop, stop, stop. Somebody needs to stop him. Somebody needs to stop him.
We'll build the grain control first, not the bridge.
Stop!
You have to build the grain control.
Son of a gun, man.
To remember that at meeting council.
Stop!
We recommended in council we not to spend the two hundred thousand.
Okay, go ahead mayor.
Mario, you just went on a whole big bling without listening to a word that we're saying here in the council, okay? Don't do that. How much is the money that District Six is giving us to go with this project? You said we got partial funding, how much?
It's nine hundred and let me give you the exact number. Um. It's about nine hundred and sixty thousand that's committed from the DOT for map stage one.
And the governor has not vetoed that yet?
No.
Are you sure Mario?
Yes, sir, I can provide you the email from District Six, sir.
Please do that.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we've got that nine hundred thousand, now let's go ahead and do the engineering report. Because we can move forward. Nine hundred thousand, right Mario? So that means we do the engineering report, we got nine hundred thousand dollars to build the bridge, right?
I'm sorry mayor, say again.
What I'm saying is, if we go ahead and do the preliminary engineering. Then we have nine hundred thousand dollars to do the bridge. See, I for some for some reason, I'm not buying that because she vetoed the Washington Bridge already. She took that away from us. What was it, one point two million? Now you're telling me District Six is gonna give us nine hundred thousand dollars? Where are they gonna get nine hundred thousand dollars from when the governor, I mean, come on man, explain it to me.
Mayor, the the governor vetoed a hundred thousand that we had for Washington drainage. We have one point five million for Washington Bridge.
And she didn't veto that?
Here next month in May.
She did veto that money for the Washington Bridge, right Mario?
No, no, sir, it was a hundred thousand in Tampa Island in twenty twenty and and it was only for uh street and drainage improvement.
Go ahead Laura.
So, I uh recommendation might that we prove this, can the governor special?
There you go.
And then we'll know what that's going, what is gonna be so further. Uh um it's that's just probably two months away, we can wait to start this preliminary engineering report till that time.
I'm good with that, I agree with her, I'm I'm good with that. Any questions there Fred, Rick?
No.
Rick, you got anything? Turn your mic on buddy, we can't hear you.
Yeah, I think uh I think we should go ahead with this preliminary engineering report.
Go ahead, make the motion.
Yeah, I made the motion to approve the Roosevelt Avenue Bridge replacement preliminary engineer fifty thousand dollars.
Second. Going once. Going twice.
I'll make a second.
Second by Council Garcia. Council Paria?
No, we should take.
Council Lucero?
Yes.
Council Garcia?
Yes.
Council Ocarte?
No.
And Albo, yes.
You're gonna put it in?
Yeah, if they if we got nine hundred thousand dollars for it guys, we need to go ahead and do it.
Yeah, they do.
But you know what, um the motion Rick is to wait and see if the governor vetoes it, right?
Right, yes.
Okay, so there's your motion. The motion is to approve the preliminary report. Pending what the governor does in May or June whenever she's gonna finish her final hacks on this.
So it's not a motion to to approve the the preliminary?
It is pending.
Pending.
If they keep the nine.
Because that way if if the governor vetoes and and takes everything and slams us all down, then it doesn't go through.
But if it doesn't go through, if it if it does get.
Go ahead Rick.
Yeah, uh Mario indicated that the nine, he has an email indicating that the nine uh nine sixteen. Is was uh is there from District Six?
Yeah, but the governor has the power to take that away, okay? Make no doubt about it.
Right.
And with what what's happened here with this COVID nineteen and. Her tried to kill the oil and gas industry in this state, she's gonna have no money. So she's gonna have to come up with that money from somewhere. I guarantee you there is no money guys. So that's the motion and it passed, let's move on to the next one. Go to little First Street Pond and Stormwater Station Engineering Design.
Mario, Mario, why don't you go ahead and go and uh Laura, you give it to the presentation.
Okay, very good. So, um uh real briefly, uh Don and and manager, I mean I sent you the DOT email, so you guys have it and. And uh print at your pleasure for the council on the on the first item. On the second item, First Street Stormwater Pond Station, the engineering task quarter before you is uh two hundred and twenty-two thousand. First of all, can you guys now see the bottom one? Let me ask that.
Yes, I can see it.
Okay, go to the next slide. Uh next. Okay, so in the slide here, let's just go through the board. It's a hundred thousand that's been funded through the Rio San Jose. And the way it works is once a month, the the uh their portion is expended, we submit receipt. I U uh the city submits copies of the uh uh checks and then we'll re- reimburse the hundred thousand. Um you can see second bullet item shows one point six million NMDOT. In red stricken out and then it's followed by Water Trust Board Tampa Island Cooperative Agreement. Control number Charlie six nineteen three three one seven. Red stricken out with W P F sixty-nine-five, so uh the uh the idea here is to utilize a hundred thousand from the Rio San Jose. That that was a request that was made for the towards this uh pond and pump station. And we about three weeks ago, uh Don and I were at at the RTPO meeting and the DOT delivered the one point six million in cooperative agreement. Uh for the uh First Street. Um. Page two, which will essentially finish from uh Adams to to Washington, excuse me, from Washington all the way to Roosevelt. That particular agreement, just wanna point out that it it has a um six months requirement in the agreement. Where a five percent expenditure must be made. Um that agreement was third October and Don just received it three weeks ago. Correct, Don?
So what does that mean?
So, we 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 have to show an expenditure of uh eighty thousand, five percent of that and so recommendation would be to utilize it. For the one point six, go ahead and and do the proper paperwork and utilize that to pay the additional one twenty-two. To finish designing the drainage alcohol um uh now and uh and then tomorrow. Tomorrow, we have a call in the morning for the last one point eight million. Mayor, there was a confusion and Justin Reese Deputy Director wanted to clear up with District Six, so tomorrow we are discussing that last one point eight billion. So uh who who brought all the stuff available this month. Don is looking to put that out to build in May and start construction uh this year for First Street. This item before you tonight is only for the design, so again, the time for the pond, the pump station, a hundred thousand, Rio San Jose. Recommending the balance of one of a hundred twenty-two thousand five seventy-three and thirty-eight and um.
Questions? Fred, you got any questions?
I just thought of uh. The flood control.
Yes, sir, the flood control provided a hundred thousand. What about the other one? The the balance of a hundred and twenty-two thousand, five hundred and seventy-three dollars and thirty-eight cents. We would recommend that it be um taken from the one point six uh map funding. Because we we do have it till the end of this month to spend five percent per the agreement and nothing has been spent.
That answer your question?
Thank you Mario.
Rick?
You're very welcome, sir.
Rick, you got any questions?
Yeah, so we can spend five percent by the end of April on this project?
That is correct, yes, sir.
Are we able to do that?
Um it's gonna be hard pressed to do the eighty thousand. Um eighty thousand frankly for engineering is 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 hard to do. Uh we're we're there, I I don't think we'll get to the eighty thousand, but we'll keep the DOT abreast. So it's hard to see progress and the project isn't seeing. What the what the legislature is looking at first and foremost is any money that hasn't moved out, any expenditures that haven't been made. So we have some expenditures, we probably won't have the eighty, we just can't put enough effort on that to to burn it that quick.
Sure, sure.
Uh councilman uh Rick Lucero, I spoke to the DOT and uh they said primarily what they're looking for is activity. So not necessarily the whole five percent, I'm sure if we're at three, four percent, I'm sure they're fine with that, they wanna see activity.
Right, I mean, okay, that that answers my question, as long as we're moving uh on that project to make the progress, we're we're probably okay.
Mark, you got something?
Yes Mario, I have a question, uh.
Yes, sir.
I see the NMDOT is scratched out and it's Water Trust Board, is that uh match funding? And it's still a five percent?
Yes, good question and uh it's important for for everyone to know that there is also Water Trust Board recommendation of one point six million, so the numbers are the same. But the Water Trust Board will be used for construction. For construction. That's why I left both numbers in there, so the NMDOT control number Charlie six one nine three three one seven is where we would take the hundred twenty-two thousand. Five seventy-three and thirty-eight cents to pay for the the engineering. And the Water Trust Board will be used for construction.
You got any questions Eric?
Did I answer your question, sir?
What happens if we don't go with this, uh pay the five percent by the end of April? I mean this this whole thing just stops?
Do you hear that Mario?
Don, did you wanna answer that? I'm sorry, I could open up the question?
What I'm asking is, say we, we don't pay the eighty thousand by the end of of April, what happens then?
Well, that was a point prior was that if we say we spend sixty, seventy thousand, I spoke to the DOT. They're fine with even if we spend less, they just wanted to see activity.
That we're moving on the project.
So what's the what's the what's the minimum that we could be spending because obviously we're having some hard times? So what can we do to one or two percent? They just want to see some action?
They didn't give a a percentage, uh I'm sure, I'm thinking we we could at least get two and a half percent, forty thousand. And I and I'm sure they'll be fine, she didn't give me any kind of percentage, she just said they wanna see activity. If there's activity, then they see commitment.
Let me ask you a question, Don. Uh you said they they just wanna see activity, correct? That's what you're saying?
Correct.
Now, does that activity that they're that they wanna see, does that have a time a timeframe or is it uh?
End of April.
End of April, right?
Yes, the end of April is by the.
Okay Laura, uh let me ask it, let me ask Laura then, Laura, uh how do we look as a city for that?
We we can swing at, we'll we'll make every effort in that and to finish out this project. Uh my experience with the NMD DOT is that they have added extensions uh many a times and if. They try not to hinder new project, they don't work with us.
So we could we could very very well, if we don't meet that Ap- April deadline, we can ask for extensions, that's what you're saying?
Yes, typically.
Okay, that answered my question.
Anything else in the council? I'll entertain a motion. Engineering First Street Stormwater Pond, guys, this completes First Street, we need to do this.
I I I wanna make a motion that we we do the stormwater for uh the First Street project, uh depending on percentage, you know, what we can afford, I don't know what it is, but uh. Uh it's one thing that, you know, we need for this community because we get a we get a lot of uh flack for First Street being so awful, so we're we're gonna be progressing forward where. Uh it's just gonna help out the community, we'll see uh what the percentage is, so I make a motion that we approve it.
For two hundred and twenty-two thousand five hundred seventy-three thirty-eight.
For two hundred twenty thousand, two hundred seventy thirty-eight. Is that right?
Second.
I'll second it.
Council Paria?
Yes.
Council Lucero?
Yes.
Council Garcia?
Yes.
Council Ocarte?
Yes.
That's something we've been working on for twenty years, right?
It's been a long time that we, that project has been in the works.
Number ten, this one here is down behind Futures guys. Um trying to bring back the natural flood plain. To behind Futures and behind uh Mesa View to open the ditch up right there and bring it all back to the natural flood plain that it was when we were kids. Um it'll turn it into basically a biopark, you'll have the birds and the fish and the frogs and the turtles and all that stuff. If you go down there and you walk that little triangle right now, we've got bus rats in there. It's just, it would be really cool to to return it back to it is. Donald, you were there when we did this. Talk to me.
Say what?
You were there when we talked about this over there behind Futures?
Yes.
And all we're asking for is approval to put in an application for a planning grant on this guys.
Now, does that mean, does that, does that mean we have to get the state's approval in in that particular area?
No.
Not at all? Cause it's not?
No, we're good, we're going through the federal game and fish, what is it Fish and Wildlife Services, this is what we're going through. The state doesn't own that land, Ronnie Pines owns that land.
Okay.
And Ronnie Pines is gonna give us that land once we get through with this. Okay, that's part of the land exchange we're doing with him to get this project done.
Eric, you're talking just that kind of way here, right behind?
Yes, from the Futures Foundations to Mesa View. To the ditch.
Alright, the the next slide is the. We have a commission for an economic development plan for the city's biopark.
That looks great.
For the uh uh mayor is familiar with this, but the council for those of you that may not be aware, um. The 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 city was also awarded this year, we're notified, uh cooperative funding in in Washington Street. For river drain drainage improvement, Washington Street, uh although it's a regular improvement, it really, most of your projects was just. Problem for what they are, they're flood control projects, uh we're putting in the underground storm drain. We're using the river to collect the water. Uh we we have a joint project with the public schools, Eastlake Elementary, so they also got funded, we've been working.
What happened?
That funding will also be made available this October and we'll start designing uh the river drain drainage. And we'll uh we'll plan all the drainage. The school, that school gave a place. Here in the next, I'll say, three years, um they 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 are they are being funded for for school or places. So part of that, we gotta carry the water from Washington down south and so this this uh what we're calling the. Is is not.
Nothing more than flood control, right? What happened?
Behind that.
Bandwidth, is it holding up? Slow internet.
Or, what what?
Mario, if you were mind, maybe you could share a little bit about some of the the natural habitat uh over the years that that you've described to us that that was. Uh that that this was hard to?
Yeah, that's exactly what we wanna bring it back to guys.
Right, my my question is, is how is it gonna affect this, the the community that's around it, I mean, is it gonna, is it gonna improve? Stop the flooding, and then you said there's just rats and stuff over there anyways?
Bus rats, you're gonna have frogs, you're gonna have swans, you're gonna have those crane cranes, all of that stuff will come back. When I was a kid, we used to get frogs.
Don, can you hear me okay?
And get frogs.
Yeah, I can hear you, I tell you. Mayor.
It was a good thing to do.
We can hear the council, Mark.
Talk talk into the microphone?
Can you hear me now?
Give us a thumbs up if you.
Can you hear me now? I guess nobody can hear me but people in the chambers. Can you hear me now? I feel like I'm on a Verizon commercial.
Our internets.
Mark, are you calling, Mark?
Yeah.
Ford, can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Call the bar, are you calling, Mark? Ford, can you speak on your mic?
Check, check mic, check mic, one, two.
We can hear you or the council.
Check mic, one, two, nothing? No?
Hello?
No.
Okay, uh I'm.
Mine is coming in and out.
Oh, we're in doubt, man.
Okay, how about now? Can anybody hear me now? All these guys? Was that a yes Rick? I can hear you Fred.
Mark, we still be, Mark, we still can't hear you, I can hear Fred and Rick and Laura, I can hear you or the council.
Okay, um I, we can finish this from a conference call, let me, let me get.
Wah!
Sorry.
Can you hear me now? What do we got left?
I I can.
We got ten?
Eleven?
Eleven.
Yeah, that's right, go ahead. I'm not, hey, I'll push out, let me, let me call them, hold on, I.
Technology, you've got to love it. You know guys, this one here, this is an operator, it takes all the flood control that we've been doing, this is the last piece, man. This one here is gonna be funded basically by everybody else, it's not gonna cost us a dime.
I don't think he's gonna, he's gonna add any more than than what we know already.
That's it. So here we go, we're gonna entertain a motion to approve Resolution number twenty sixteen sixty-eight.
I'll make a motion that we approve resolution, Resolution number tw- twenty dash sixteen sixty-eight. Authorizing and approving submission of a completed application for financial financial assistance and project approval. To the New Mexico Finance Authority for the Rio San Jose Grants and Royal Biopark Preliminary Engineering Report.
Thank you, I'll just stay the second.
Mark, can you make a clear call, sorry?
Okay, Eric?
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
Can you guys hear me out there yet?
Mark's right there next to the mayor.
My phone ain't here.
Oh, gotcha.
Mark, can they call you on your phone?
Yes. My phone ain't here.
Now that they are, or what? Oh no, it's in and out. You still in my ear?
Yeah, we're voting, this motion in the second is made.
Who made the second?
Eric.
Article Polo.
I'm calling, I'm calling.
Yes, sir Fred, Fred.
Don, are you in?
Yes, sir.
Uh we can hear you guys.
We can hear you though Fred.
But we can't hear you.
He said, Fred said they can't hear us, that's him calling me.
They can't hear us, but.
They can't hear us.
Tell them we got a motion?
Or just put it on speaker. Okay, Fred, can you hear us?
Can you hear me now Fred?
No.
Fred, can you hear us?
Can you hear me on the phone Fred?
You have my phone Fred? Can you hear me? Okay, I got you.
What we got? This is everyone? Okay, guys, here's what we got, we got a motion and a second to approve Resolution twenty sixteen sixty-eight. We're now voting on it.
We're now voting on it.
Council Lucero, yes or no?
Can I make a point?
After the vote Laura. After the vote, we've already called for the vote.
Already called for the vote.
Yes or no?
Yes or no?
Uh what's the resolution, which one is that?
It's the one for the biopark behind the Futures of Mesa View.
Futures of Mesa View.
Yes, uh I, yes.
Council Paria?
Council Paria?
Eric?
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
It's passed. Last one, Jefferson Avenue Drainage Project Storm Change Order.
Change order.
Hey, say next slide, Mark. Good evening, uh mayor, council, um this is Donnie Dunham of Full Street Company, so. Um about end of end of January, we discovered an unknown um damage. Adventurer superlative has been conflict with our storm drain for uh for the Jefferson ruin drainage project. Um at two locations, uh we have a pond up to north of the church that discharges west, uh we we had a conflict there. As well as at the intersection of uh Washington and and Jefferson. Um, I can know that uh you know, talking with everyone, no one knew about this mine.
The contractor hid it while they were excavating and uh and there was quite a bit of uh uh wastewater flowing through there, so. Um you know, we 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 started working with the contractor in the city to come up with a with a solution, we couldn't modify the storm drain because of all the flat grades in the area. We have a a gravity sanitary sewer crossing with the gravity storm drain, we couldn't make any adjustments to make it work. So we uh proposed um doing a, basically just putting a a junction box, which what we're looking at on the screen now is is a is a junction box. Actually, this is a, that that's like, Mario, that one, this slide right, better, cause it highlights the location of the of the sanitary sewer line. And so that that rectangle where there's a gap in the in the red sanitary sewer line, the the red line highlighted is the is the existing damage. And our our storm drain is the is the uh is the shaded um structure and there's a there's a rectangle there. Um, where there's a gap in the, in the red line. That's where the, that's the junction box, that represents the junction, junction box that we're, that we're installing. And, um, the way, basically because the, because of the conflict, we're, we're creating a sump in that junction box that water can flow underneath and, and, and around, uh, uh, an encased sanitary sewer. And again, we coordinated with the, with, uh, with Mark and, uh, and the, the city of Grants. And because of that sanitary sewer, the existing ten inch was flowing so full, we, the, the whole team thought it was prudent to look at the, look at a, a larger pipe size. And so we came up with a, with an eighteen inch to handle, you know, future, future flows so we don't have to tear up these, these structures later on with a thirty inch casing. And, and so, um, and while we're, while we're working on the intersection here, um, at Washington and Jefferson, uh, we, we know, while the roads turn up, we might as well replace that, all of the ten inch line with eighteen inch line. And so we got a quote from the, uh, the contractor for this work, for the two conflict locations and, and junction boxes. And the quote came in as, um, a hundred and seventeen thousand, oh, it's on the next slide, a hundred and seventeen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-one dollars and forty-four cents excluding, uh, New Mexico gross receipt tax. So, um, so this, this slide, oop, let me go back. This slide, it, it gives you a, a little, some details, a six by ten foot junction box. Two hundred twenty-five liter feet of ten inch, or, okay, it's actually eighteen inch, uh, sanitary sewer line. Um, and, and we, we've reviewed the, the change order in depth and we made a, a couple minor adjustments that didn't really impact the, the cost much. And, um, so, so we're, we're, we're good with the cost, it's a, it's a, it's a good cost for the work that, that they're doing. Um, and Sandy D, David Bishop, is also, um, okay with, with, uh, uh, with this change order and adding it to the construction cost. And it will be covered by, uh, the clean water funding that we have for the project. Uh, and we, and we do have, um, some agency funds to cover this amount. Uh, and, oop, go back. Um, and, and our recommendation is to, is to replace, um, is to, is to go forward with these improvements and, and replace the existing ten inch, uh, with an eighteen inch, uh, throughout the, the construction project to outside that pipe, or underneath the, the intersection basically, so we don't have to come back and tear it up later.
Questions?
With that, are there any questions?
Councilor Padilla, questions?
Is it here, right, people are replacing about two hundred and twenty-five feet?
That's correct, uh, and that, that's the length that's basically underneath the, the intersection. If, if you look at it, it's pretty, just because of the geometry of how Washington's intersecting with Jefferson, that basically is the, the red line, the length of that red line is what we're, is about two hundred and twenty-five feet.
Thank you, uh, Donald.
Yes, Eric.
We have covered, uh, the one seventeen with a clean water removing program, right?
Correct. It, we do have enough contingency, contingency to cover this change order.
Rick?
Yeah, I'm, I'm good, as long as it, um, as long as it's covering that change order with that, um, with that scope of, uh, funding, I'm good with it.
Eric, you have any questions still?
So, what you're saying, the, the pipe to change it out, obviously, it's, it's a great idea for, to get it done because there is funding for it, but the reason why we're changing it out because most of the flow of the sewer comes through that pipe from, uh, the northeast part of Grants. So, uh, obviously, it's a no-brainer to get it done even, uh, now that we have funding for it, it's all, it's all good.
Fred?
Okay, my question is, uh, am I on? Yeah, am I on now?
The other way, there you go, the other way, lift the button up, right there.
Okay, assuming that, uh, that we approve this, what kind of timeframe are we looking to finish this, this job? That, for you, Mario?
So, the current, current schedule is, oh, I'm sorry, I can answer, it's forty-one days worth of work that we do have to add for your, this line replacement. The contractor's gonna have to bypass, so they're gonna have to set, set up a very bypass of the ten inch sanitary sewer to route the flows around when they remove the ten inch. Give the solid eighteen inch, build the casing and build the structure and put the, the storm drain in. So it's adding forty-one days, but I have to, I don't have the schedule for me. We do have that invasion system.
We're in early July. It's in early July, the scheduled date to end now, but this would add the date that they're requesting for the change order. And so right now, it's scheduled to end in early July.
So it would be in August when it's over?
We're looking at September.
And that's assuming that you don't find any other difficulty or problems in there, right?
He asked that, uh, that's, if we don't have any other, run into any other problems there, right? But we've already hit all the problems because we've already dug it up, so we know there ain't no more problems.
Well, that's, I wanna hear it from him.
This, this is, this, we, we, if, if you've been out there, they're, they're wrapping up, everything underground, this is the last piece.
Any other questions?
Okay, I think, uh, I think that address is a, a question.
Here's, here's my-
Can, let me add one more thing, let me add one more thing. Uh, as we know, we have a shallow groundwater, and this area is no different. Uh, I just wanna make the council aware that this pavement section, uh, is, is, is designed with a geogrid system, uh, a, a very hefty foundation, so, um, it, it's designed to be able to dig that shallow groundwater, so we really don't want any underground utility. Uh, these roads have been there for twenty years, and we don't want any underground utility leaving out or, or, or barely. That's why we're recommending the four two hundred and twenty-five liter feet, so they were completely out of the intersection.
Okay, here's my question. How's the sump gonna work, guys?
So, the junction box itself is, we're house extending water, um, in, in that lower twelve inches of the box. Uh, but the, the box is oversized, man, because-
My concern is the solids, Mario. My concern is the solids hanging up in the sump. It's not the water, it's the, it's the solids hanging up in the sump, buddy. If it's gonna be lower, the solids are gonna fall out of it into the sump. That's my concern.
Yeah, yeah, you know, we think we've done the past that we can do here, but, but here we got shallow groundwater. And it, and, and, and for that reason, we didn't, we didn't show it. And the only, the only thing is to add a, a, a little gathering, it's really just a little, um, drainage drain that penetrates through the box to be able to drain off the sump. But the problem is when that groundwater rises, we see that groundwater rise as high as the, the, the elevation of the road, right? And so we don't want any groundwater infiltration on, on the sump. Um, the guy pointed out, we, we, everything is about near gravity. Um, the only way to get rid of it, frankly, is to put a, a small little lift station and, uh, I, we wouldn't recommend that, it's, it's, it's not enough foundation.
Okay. The solids are gonna build up in that sump, man. I mean, there's gotta be a way to push them through, because if not, the sump's gonna be a complete plug.
Or, or suck it out with vector, that's a possibility.
Well, we, we will look at, we're in, see if we can put in some proper favor to, to minimize the sub, minimize the threat, and I'll, I'll be with you.
Will the vector truck suck it out? Did you hear me, Mario? Will the vector truck suck it out?
Yeah, the vector truck will, will go in there and do maintenance regardless, but we can look at that sump and, and see if we can minimize it.
Alright.
That sump, maybe we could, uh, look into putting some kind of monitoring system to keep an eye on that thing.
Yeah, that's just gonna drive the cost crazy. The monitoring system is our employees going by there checking what's-
Yeah.
So you hear that, Mark?
Yes, sir.
That's our monitoring system. We're not gonna spend no money to put in something that's gonna give an alarm or something. Our alarm is our people. And our people are doing a great job. Um, you would be amazed the attitude how it's changed around here, Fred, since you were here last.
Well, that's, that's, uh, that's a good plus, sir.
Yes, it is.
That's, that sump's not gonna create any smell or anything, right?
Will it create a smell, Mario?
Um, you know, I, I, I think our project will, um, and I was just talking to Donnie when, when you guys were communicating, when, when having our meeting, that we're doing to minimize that pump, so we're gonna just get it married, begin with Don here. Um, I, I, just give us a couple of days, we'll, we'll come up with a, uh, contribution to try to minimize it, but there's gonna be some maintenance. We don't want a ground septic to create smell.
Yeah, that's the key, because we just fixed a wastewater treatment plant that was putting a smell all over this town, and I don't wanna start again. Okay?
No, no, we're not gonna go down there, we're-
On that mo, on that note, I'll entertain a motion for a hundred and seventeen thousand, eight seventy-one forty-four to complete that Jefferson sewer project.
I'll make a motion to, to give the funding for the Jefferson Avenue Drainage Project Stormwater Change Order.
Second.
I'll go ahead and second it.
Councilor Padilla? Councilor Lucero?
Yes.
Councilor Garcia?
Yes.
Councilor Ocarte?
Yes.
That's the last item, council, comments from the council. Let's start with Laura. Laura, do you got any comments tonight? Uh, you're not coming through, turn your mic on. Okay, go for it. No, Tejima's doing something.
There we go.
There you go.
Um, I wanted to note that on the project that, uh, we're applying for-
Hey, Laura, step in here. Sit over a little bit here. Laura?
I hear you.
Just come on in here, Eric's gonna give you a little room. We'll keep our social distance. There you go, Eric stepped away, and you can step back in, go ahead, give us your comments.
So, I wanted to note the bio park that was titled the bio park on your agenda, that is actually a flood project.
That it is.
And so it's part of our master flood plan. And, um, I saw some comments on the Facebook that people are saying we should be doing, you know, focusing on other priorities. But that's part of a flood project that is very important, especially to people that live in those neighborhoods and have had their homes flooded almost yearly. So I wanted the public to be aware of that. And then I wanted to welcome our new council, councilors, and we're very happy to have you and we're very excited to be working with you.
Thank you. Thank you, Laura. Fred, you got any comments? Fred Padilla?
Good talking with you, Shane, uh, congratulations, Larry and Fred, what a work, guys.
Rick?
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, same thing, Eric and Fred, uh, welcome aboard, uh, look, uh, look forward to working with you guys and doing some good things for our community.
Comment, Eric?
I just wanna thank everybody, uh, this is gonna be, uh, interesting, this is something that I really wanted for, uh, for a few years. You know, Eric, people know I ran for, uh, county commissioner twice. And, uh, now coming over here into the city, you know, there's a lot of good people here that work for the city, there's good people here in our community. The people who run the community, uh, outstanding people, and, uh, I'm glad to be a part of it, so, uh, we may not have all the answers, but hopefully we can get to a, a, a common path where we can make our, our, our city, let's just say, the best damn little city in New Mexico.
Make mine, Danny. Fred?
Uh, I just, uh, wanna say thank you to, to the constituents in District Three for, um, giving me a, a term here in the, uh, Grand City Council, uh, for the third time. Uh, I appreciate that, I, I consider it a privilege and a blessing to be on the city council. I look forward to, uh, working with the mayor and the council and the city manager and the city clerk and Mark and all the people from the city. Um, I always consider it an honor and a privilege to be able to be a part of making decisions and doing things that are good for our community. Thank you guys very much.
I'd like to welcome both of you aboard. I'm really happy with the way the election came out. Let's make no doubt about that. Um, one thing I do have for all four of you councilors, coming up before July, we will make a decision on the concealed carry for our employees. Um, whether we're gonna do it like Roswell does it, or whether we're gonna pay for it ourselves. Um, one way or another, we're gonna make a decision on that before the budget comes up. I've had a couple of our employees doing some research for me, for Utah, other states around that do this, that allow this, and Roswell allows it, allows their employees to conceal carry, but they don't pay for the training. Um, so that's all coming, guys. Uh, you still got three, four months before we get to that. I will disseminate all the information that I get from the police chief, from the code enforcement, from everybody that's giving me information, guys. You will get exactly what I got, because I want you to make an informed decision. But I definitely, the way I look at it, the biggest complaint I've got about what I'm trying to do is liability. Okay? And here's the way I see liability. We're liable for everything in the city of Grants anyway. And I'd rather be liable for one dead turd than twenty dead kids. Period. At Future Foundations, I'd rather be liable for one dead gangbanger than fifteen dead kids. Same thing at the library. One dead turd that wants to take out our, our citizens. I'd rather be responsible for that guy, liable for that person, than our fifteen, twenty kids of our citizens. So, just so you know where I'm at.
Can I make one final comment?
Go ahead.
Uh, I just wanted to say to, to the mayor, to the council, the council members, Mark, uh, Jean Anne, and, uh, Laura, uh, I've been in, uh, constant contact with my boss, you, uh, most of you know that I'm a radio DJ and, uh, I would like to offer my services to the city. I'm currently working on a, on a project where I, uh, I, we, we haven't made an agreement yet between me and Derek at the radio station, but, uh, I wanna be able to put out, uh, you know, like you, you, Derek's interviewed the mayor many times.
Many times, guys, and I won't be on his radio station again.
And, uh, I'm currently working on some, we're putting something together to where we could put something to the public on a daily basis. It'll be maybe just a short clip that, uh, uh, that I'll be working on to get information from the police departments, the fire department, the mayors, uh, you know, whoever, city managers, county managers, and I wanna make myself available to, you know, like, like, you know, uh, Hicks, Ma- Mayor Hicks, you got an open door in my show anytime you wanna come on board.
Cool, I appreciate that. I appreciate that, because as the president says, I've got the bully pulpit in the town. And I use it, guys, okay? And a lot of the stuff that's been printed lately and that has been on Channel Thirteen is not true, so don't believe that. If you didn't hear it come out of my mouth, guys, I probably didn't say it. And if I did say it, I will tell you that I said it, okay? I have no problem saying what I say and when I said it, okay? But I have a problem when they take it out of context and try to make you look bad, which seems to be what happens very regularly with me. And that's why I will not be giving no interviews to the civil citizen any longer, or Channel Thirteen ever again. And I didn't give them an interview this time for that very reason, guys, because they never give the city of Grants a fair shake on anything. On that note, I'll entertain a motion to clear, close the meeting.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn the city council meeting for March, uh, the second, twenty twenty? Or April, tw- April?
Second.
Sorry about that.
Second? Fred, did you second it?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor say aye. Alright, have a good night, guys.